Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the New York State Senate Elections Committee Public Hearing on Voting Rights and Election Administration. Usually, I would start this off with an opening statement, but we are in the district of the Majority Leader of the New York State Senate, and she has taken time out of her incredibly busy schedule to join us this morning. So we will start it off with our Majority Leader, Andrea Stewart-Cousins.
Thank you so much, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here early in the morning, early in the week, to have a conversation about our elections process. We do know what time it is in America. We should know that, so far, forty-eight states have introduced at least three-hundred-and-eighty-nine new bills designed to limit voting rights. Between January and May, fourteen states enacted twenty-two new voter restriction laws, putting us on track to have one of the most regressive years in voting ever. We know the leadership of our Senate Majority Leader Chuck Schumer, and, of course, our Junior Senator, Senator Gillibrand, as well as the efforts of our House Congressional delegation. We in New York understand. But all over the nation, people are pushing back in the most important franchise that we have. It is the cornerstone of our democracy. And my good colleague and friend, Senator Myrie, who chairs the Elections Committee, has been going all over the state, hopefully to reignite people's understanding about what's at stake here, but also to engage us in meaningful conversations as we continue, at this point, to lead the nation in terms of voting rights. This delegation that's here, and you'll hear from each of one, my colleague who also represents White Plains, because you might not know, but I bet you do, that we have been involved sadly, or subjected to gerrymandering. So Senator Mayer and I both represent White Plains. And to either side of me, we will hear from Senator Pete Harkam, who represents some of Westchester and Putnam, and then Senator Reichlin Melnick, who represents Rockland. I am proud to say that, under our leadership, we have advanced significant voting rights legislation. People thought, because we were New York, we were not anywhere as far behind as we were. I knew this, because many of you remember the elections we've had here, including my own, in 2004, and we were subjected to every sort of suppression, whether it was dropping people from the rolls, whether it was moving election precincts around, whether it was suppressing people's votes, long, long lines. We've seen it right here in New York. And so when we took the majority, under, again, the leadership of Senator Myrie, freshmen, we came right out the back. Early voting, you know, voter registration early. We will have a chance to vote on no-excuse absentee ballots as a constitutional amendment. We have got automatic voter registration. We could go on and on. But what is really significant is that every single time that we begin a session, since I've been leader in 2019, we begin with passing sweeping voting rights legislation, because we owe our ability to really uplift democracy. Because of your efforts and people coming out to participate is extremely important to us. So I want to thank you for being here. I want to recognize at least two of my electeds that I see. I see Terry Clemmons, who's the county legislator from New Rochelle, and I see Councilman, yeah, give her a hand.[292.12][292.12](APPLAUSE). And I see, we're in his home turf, White Plains, Councilman Justin Brash. Thank you.[301.12][301.12](APPLAUSE). And with that, I will turn it over to, again, our wonderful Elections Chair. You would not have known from that first debate where he, and I say, all of your colleagues, all of your representatives are fierce advocates for everything, and certainly this. But when I asked Senator Myrie to head up elections, I knew he could do it, but I'll tell you, the buzz began immediately, because he went toe-to-toe, and, of course, we started then and have continued to pass the most significant election reforms in the state history. Senator Myrie.
Thank you so much, Madam Leader, for those very kind words. We would not be where we are today if it were not for your dedication and commitment to our democracy. And I don't think people fully comprehend the amount of changes that we have made to the election law, close to one hundred, since our leader has been leading our conference. And so we are very grateful that you have continued to be committed to our democracy, and that you thought it was important that we didn't just hear from New York City, that we, it was important for us to go throughout the entire state, to hear from voters and stakeholders, and how we can improve our democracy. So I'm very glad to be a part of a conference that has prioritized opening up our democracy and trying to deliver a world-class effort for all New Yorkers. I would give my colleagues an opportunity to offer an opening statement as well, and we will start with Senator Mayer.
Thank you, Senator Myrie. It's wonderful to be here, and I want to thank Senator Myrie, as he said, not only for ensuring that we heard voices outside of New York City, but that we heard from voices of voters. There are many institutional players in the election space, as there are in all of the things that we deal with legislatively. But at the end of the day, this comes down to the experience of individuals who seek to cast their ballot. And those of us who lived through the days when the Majority Leader was, ran two times in Yonkers and encountered extraordinary barriers, to the long lines for early voting last year, and the lack of adequate spaces to vote in all of our communities. Each of these issues impacts voters individually, and today, we have the opportunity to hear from them. I so appreciate that. I also appreciate, again, that we are doing this in White Plains, the county seat of Westchester, but we are able to hear from the entire Hudson Valley. And I know you're going to go through the ground rules, but those that don't speak certainly can submit written testimony, which will be part of the record. I received emails this morning telling pressing stories about the experiences and challenges people had having to vote. All of that will be included. So I encourage people to email at the site noted, which we'll give you, so that your experience and your insight and your opinions count when we draft legislation.
Thank you, Senator Mayer. We will next hear from Senator Harkam.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you for your leadership, and you, Madam Majority Leader. When we first took the majority, three years ago, the Majority Leader said, "We can't fix our state until we fix our democracy." And so, under Senator Myrie's leadership, there was a transformative package right out of the gate in our first days of our first session. And under their leadership, we have continued that commitment. So I'm thrilled you came to Westchester to continue that conversation. Want to welcome one of my constituents, Putnam County Election Commissioner Anthony Scannapico. Welcome. Thank you for coming and for your service.[547.66][547.66](APPLAUSE). And I look forward to what everybody's got to say today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Harkam, and we will next hear from Senator Reichlin Melnick.
Thank you so much, Senator Myrie, for the introduction, for organizing this hearing for so many people in our community to be able to come out and share their experiences with voting and with the election process. As our leader said, we're seeing states all over the country go the opposite direction from New York. Make voting harder, give partisan officials even more sway over the voting process. And New York, we have long tried to hold ourselves up as a beacon of voting rights, and I'm proud that, as a member of this majority, the Senate Democratic Majority has been moving the state in a positive direction on voting rights, from the first week of the majority in 2019 and straight through to the beginning of this year, when we passed very needed reforms to the absentee ballot process. Because what a lot of us did see last year, with the flood of absentee ballots, long lines at early voting sites, we are certainly a state that still has work to do to improve the voter experience, to make it easier and more convenient for people to have their voices heard. And so it's great to be here as part of this hearing, and I'm looking forward, along with my colleagues, to hearing from everybody here today and to reading the testimony that's been submitted. I do want to recognize we've got Trish Giblin, the Republican Commissioner of Elections from Rockland. Thank you for coming.[635.88][635.88](APPLAUSE). And I see another of my constituents, John Gramata, who is on the Executive Committee of the Rockland Democratic Party. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you very much. And so a few programmatic notes before we hear from our first panel of witnesses. I'd first like to thank the Westchester County Center for allowing us to hold this hearing today. It is the policy of the center that, if you are not speaking on the mic, that you wear a mask. And so I will remind folks as people are coming in, but please do keep your masks on unless you are speaking into the mic. Would also remind our witnesses that will be testifying that you have five minutes to testify. Each senator on this panel will have three minutes to question, and we will try our best to allow as much testimony as possible, but please do be mindful of the time. And as Senator Mayer referenced, we have received a lot of written testimony. I would encourage anyone who was not able to attend today to please submit the testimony. At the end of the hearing, we will say where you can submit that to, but you can also go to the Senate website to view that. And we encourage folks who may be watching this from at home, and you say, "Well, I want to come testify in person." You can do that. You can do that. I know we have scores of viewers at home who are ready and willing to come testify, so please do stop by if you can. And lastly, I'd like to thank all of the staff that has made this happen. A huge thank you to my staff, Ed Lean and Matt, and to the staff of my colleagues here, as well as the tech staff that has made this broadcast possible. All right. So with that, we will start with the first panel. And so if Julie Weiner and Fred Silverman can make their way to the stage.
Thank you. I'm Julie Weiner. I'm a Democratic Party District Leader in Yonkers. I'm in the Majority Leader's district. I'm active with several election integrity organizations, Citizens for Voting Integrity New York, and I'm the Chair of the Election Integrity Committee of NYCD-16 and Divisible. And I'm here today to puzzle with you a bit over how it is that it's been so difficult to persuade many legislators, present company, thank you, thank you, thank you, accepted. The Senate has taken the lead in protecting election integrity with several very important bills passed this term. But on the whole, both nationally and locally, it's been very difficult to persuade legislators to take the science seriously. The science is really clear. Every computer anywhere in the world can be hacked. It doesn't matter whether it's connected to the Internet. Very important, highly-protected computers in the Department of Homeland Security, for example, which leads the security of our elections for the whole country. One of their computers was hacked in the SolarWinds hack, and many, many important corporate computers were hacked by the SolarWinds supply-chain trusted source hacks. What that means is, if somebody up in the supply chain who's, for example, editing code or writing code to catch even for security, if somehow their revision gets hacked, then the trusted source that hands the thumb drive or the, whatever the hand-carried source is to put it in the election computer, all computers can be hacked. That's why it's so important that we guarantee the right to vote on hand-marked paper ballots, that we make sure that there are robust and several paths to hand counts, that the audits be robust, that there be paths to a recount. Thank you, legislators. It took several years of lobbying, but I thank you for the passage in the New York State Senate of the right, of automatic recounts after very close elections, which the governor inserted into his budget a year or two ago, and now that's the law in New York State, and we've had a couple of close elections hand-recounted. Unfortunately, it didn't go into effect for November 2019, so because the courts, as usual, routinely denied a candidate the right to a hundred percent recount, the Democratic candidate for NYCD-22 was, had to concede without a recount in 2019. But, so, all computers can be hacked, and there's a particular danger to hybrid voting machines. And again, I thank you with, from the bottom of my heart, that the Senate passed the hybrid ban bill, because hybrid voting machines have a peculiar security design flaw that, if a hacker gets into them, they can get control of the printer and send your ballot, after you cast it, back and forth between the scanner and the printer, to see what's on your ballot, what they want to change, what marks they want to make on it, and then, without your ever seeing it again, slip it into the scanner. So we've got to ban hybrid voting machines. The federal bills, there've been a number of them passed, that would ban what they're calling tabulating ballot marking devices, same thing. Scientists, computer scientists have written papers with names like "Ballot Marking Devices Cannot Ensure the Will of the Voters," published in legitimate, respected, peer-reviewed journals. So the science is really clear. So, how come election commissioners and how come legislators aren't routinely just following the science? Voting no when it comes to requests for hybrid voting machines in their districts. Why are election commissioners still telling legislators, "This computer can't be hacked"? So let me get specific. I'm here because I witnessed what I considered intimidation and, let's say, misrepresentations of the truth, in an effort to persuade the Westchester County legislators to purchase a voting machine, which they were being begged by computer scientists and by their constituents to turn down, but they finally did it. So here's, so here are some of what I witnessed. First of all, one of the earliest opponents of the purchase of the Dominion ICE, which is one of the, currently the only hybrid that's certified in New York State, although there's another one that's in the Pike that's even worse, that won't even let you, let you hand-mark a ballot, the ESNS Express Vote Excel, but that's still to come. But the, the, one of the earliest opponents of that device was District Seven County Legislature Catherine Parker. And she said she was going to vote against it. She voted originally against it, as the majority did, when it, before the primary, when the commissioners asked for it. And then came the primary. Now, you've heard about very, very long lines in last June's primary. The worst district for long lines on Election Day were in Mamaroneck. That's in District Seven. That's in the opponent's district. She had repeatedly requested that the Board of Elections assign an early voting site to Mamaroneck. It's a relatively large locale. It's certainly larger than Dobbs Ferry, which was assigned an early voting district. And when county legislators asked Board of Election Commissioners why there was no assignment to Mamaroneck, they never got a straight answer. They never really found out why Mamaroneck was not assigned. But, you know, nobody ever says explicitly that they're retaliating against someone. But when voters are disenfranchised by having to wait in line for two, three, four hours, or by being forced, if they have the freedom, to stay up until 1:00 a.m. to vote, to have to wait in line until after 1:00 in the morning, especially when one of the election commissioners, say, at the June 29th meeting of the county legislature, when the legislators are trying to figure out what's going on, when the election commissioner says he didn't know that there was any problem in Mamaroneck until 4:00 in the afternoon, when only a short time earlier, in defending how things went in Westchester, he had boasted that he had had people from the Board of Elections going site to site. They had covered six, all sixty-two polling places. That's another, that low number, sixty-two. They had covered all sixty-two polling places.
Ms. Weiner, I don't want to cut you off, but we've given you a couple extra minutes. And so if you could just give us your most salient things you want to close this out.
So there was the denial of services to Mamaroneck voters by somebody who had admitted that he was watching all the, he had people watching all the polling places. There was, and then there were distortions of the truth. There was the claim that all the voting machines, that the voting machines he wanted were fine. There was the claim that it would take, that the reason he wanted to buy the Dominion ICE is because it would take four hours or five hours to load them in the morning, when the experience of Onondaga County the previous fall had been that it took about an hour and they could load one-hundred-and-fifty. I don't know how they got a letter from the Board of Elections claiming that it would take four hours, because the Board of, the State Board of Elections should have known that it had been done in an hour. So, and then there was finally, again, I'm calling your attention to the online video of the June 29th county legislators' hearing. The very last thing Commissioner Lafayette said was, oh, you know, seemingly defending his record, "You can't make everybody happy." And then he adds, "You're happy when you win. You're only unhappy for a day when you don't win. If you lose, you're only unhappy for a day." So his very last words were a little reminder that he had just succeeded in deflecting blame for undermining the vote in his opponent's district, and, I mean, he actually succeeded in turning the blame on her at the end of the meeting, and got them all thinking, "What happens if I lose my election at the very," or I don't know what they were thinking, but it was a gratuitous remark about losing elections. And he had just proved that you need the support of your Board of Elections. One more point. There's inherent conflict of interest when election commissioners also head their political parties. The situation is ripe for abuse. Commissioners in this position can threaten elected officials with repercussions or take revenge on them for opposing whatever they want. We need election, elections administered by professionals trained in computer science and other relevant disciplines, selected on merit through civil service exams or mechanisms of some sort. Meanwhile, there are proposed bills, S-3309 from nineteen, 2019 and 20, A-6893 in '21, at least would prohibit election commissioners from chairing political parties, removing some of their ability to retaliate, if that was retaliating. I don't know. Maybe it was just a coincidence. And A-4254 would prevent commissioners and deputy commissioners from holding elective office. I'm acknowledging it's not an easy, it's not easy to get vulnerable legislators to vote to limit the power of people who can affect their elections. So at least, I'm asking for your help, having passed the hybrid ban bill, having passed the automatic availability of ballot images, to help us to work with Assembly leadership to ensure the actual enactment of these key bills to bring New York State in compliance with election security science.
Thank you, Ms. Weiner. Mr. Silverman.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. First, I'd like to thank you all for being part of an effort to really open up voting in New York State. It's long overdue, and I thank you very much for that. What I'd like to speak about briefly is something called risk-limiting audits. These are basically audits that were developed by, a process that was developed by a professor, Philip Stark, at the University of California, Berkeley. It's a simple process that can be done, and speaks a lot to what we just heard from the person here. In essence, what they are is, they're a mathematical formula. So they're not politics, they're mathematics, like two plus two equals four. They're simple mathematics. What they do is, they are able to go in and look at computerized ballots that were done in a particular election district, and based on a sampling, a specific quantitative sampling of those ballots, can tell whether, in fact, the machines were hacked or whether something nefarious had occurred. It's that simple. It's a process that can easily be done here in New York, Colorado, Utah, Virginia, other states have already adopted it statewide. There are a number of other states that are doing pilot programs. We expect to see this adopted nationwide in a number of states, at least those that are embracing democracy. The problem is, as the Speaker a moment ago spoke about, we do have a system right now where we have electronic equipment that is built by private manufacturers, private vendors. They use proprietary code that's only known to themselves, as opposed to having developed open-source systems that everyone would be able to sort of kick the tires and look at and understand. And so this is simply done, as a result, to try to minimize the impact of this sort of dark box that is our voting equipment right now. It's a process that I asked the Senate to consider adopting a bill that would allow all counties statewide to utilize, and I've written testimony here to that effect.
Thank you very much. Senator Harkam?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank both of you. It's great to see you both, and to your point, it would have been nice had more election commissioners been here. I'm very thankful to the ones who are here and for engaging in this conversation with us, so thank you for coming, but it would have been nice for our host commissioners to be here. Question for Mr. Silverman. Fred, thank you as well for your testimony. We've talked about the audits over the years, and there've been some challenges. What do you think is the most straightforward path for creating a program for those audits in New York State?
We currently already do audits in a number of counties around the state as a performal kind of thing after the election, but they don't follow any specific process. And one of the challenges, I think, is that our Boards of Elections, in some counties, not all, but in some counties, they're sort of patronage positions, and they're not well-staffed. They're not the best people or the brightest people, and that's not a bad thing, but the process here is to allow a specific structure to these audits that would ensure that the election was fair. And I think the simplest way would be for you to pass a resolution, either to do a pilot program in a number of counties, and you can ask the county election supervisors who are interested. Maybe they can volunteer. But I think initially, after a pilot program, there's no reason to not adopt this statewide. It's a simple process. I've been in touch with Dr. Stark, and as I know Senator Harkam, you know, and they're happy to help us implement this process. It's a simple process. As I said, a number of states already have it statewide. It's required. And right now, I think with what's going on nationwide, you know, a lot of people are questioning results from both the left and the right. This speaks to that tremendously. This basically will help us build confidence back in our electoral process. It'll ensure that people understand what's going on and that it's legitimate and real.
Just a quick follow-up, if I may, Mr. Chair. In Colorado and a few other states where this has been implemented, has this necessitated the need for more staff and additional cost? Or is this something that can be done in the framework?
This is something that can be done within the current budget structure. Again, we do audits in this state on county levels, but there's no rhyme or reason to how these audits are done, and the legislation around audits is very nebulous at best. So what this would do is, this would come in, this would replace with current existing statutes, and this would require a simple process that would be followed in every would require a simple process that would be followed in every single county in the state.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is this on? Yeah, the New York Democratic Lawyers Council has a committee that's been working for a while on developing legislation that they will be sharing with you soon. And meanwhile, one of the organizations I work with, Citizens for Voting Integrity New York, has requested, and several legislators have supported, a bill to allow a single election commissioner to escalate the currently required 3% audit. Currently, our 3% audits of voting machines are really election security theater, because there's no possible path to escalation of the audit. When there are errors found, and there are often errors found, whoever, the election commissioner, who's partisan, we have a Democrat and a Republican election commissioner in each county, the election commissioner, whose candidate is ahead, vetoes the escalation, and the courts have allowed the audits to, you know, have repeatedly denied candidates the right to have an audit, the right to have escalation of the audit, to find out how many more ballots were miscounted. So we really have a problem with our audits. We need a quick, the single election commissioner would be a quick solution, and I agree, we need good legislation on risk-limiting audits, if we're going to have that, and it needs to be tested with, you know, a test run. But meanwhile, we have to solve immediately for the upcoming elections, the problem of no right of any candidate to escalate the audit, unless the numbers are so close. Now, at least, very close they can, but that doesn't solve one vote over the close vote margin.
Thank you, and thank you, Senator Harkam. Leader Stuart Cousins.
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to thank you, especially to my constituent, who you and I have talked about elections from the time I was in the county legislature. She has been dogged about making sure that people are understanding the process and trying to offer solutions. So I thank you so much, Julie, for your continued advocacy, and thank you so much as well, Mr. Silverman. I just wanted to say, which is why we're here, we want the whole gamut, from the beginning, to the middle, to the end, and to an auditing process that makes sense. And I think that now, more than ever, with the kinds of things that are going on in Arizona and so on around the state, where people are just coming in, doing things, saying they're auditing, and there's no rhyme or reason or process, we don't know what they're looking for or what they've found, I think it's incumbent upon us to find a way where, at least again, here in New York, where we lead so much, that we lead in what is an integral way to audit our elections and results and how the machines are doing. So this is really just the kind of information we, we'd like to be able to solve it all before November. I think we, I think we have to, or one of the other things we do is level set. And the reason why we're doing the statewide listening tour, because everybody's not alike, you know, what was happening. This auditorium would have been filled if we had just had the kind of election that happened in New York City, for example, because everybody, you know, I mean, it was just, everyone was involved, and it was huge. The fact that we know that every place isn't New York City is why we are trying to figure out what makes sense, because we're not a one-and-done conference. We do something, if we can tweak it or adjust it, you know, we'll continue to do it. So I said, I want to think we could do it quickly, we will do what we can quickly, but in September, there's going to be the big Albany conversation, where everybody will have an opportunity to really bring forward their ideas, and we will continue to work with you to get where we need to go. Also, one of the points you made is the two, the election commissioner being the chair. We have our Westchester County Democratic Chair here, who is Suzanne Berger, so I wanted to give Suzanne a shout out, and let you know that at least one of the things that you talked about in Westchester, you know, has been resolved.
In Westchester.
For now.
I said in Westchester.
We need it legislatively, thank you. And I know it's a really hard lift. It's not easy to.
We do hard things, though.
Yes, you do, and you have. That's why New York State is a paper.
If I may just add, I mean, the risk-limiting audits are a simple process. They could be done with simple legislation, and a training session can be done statewide for all the election supervisors and their staffs, and it could be implemented within a few weeks. That's something, if you're talking about doing something for this November, that's certainly something that's very doable and very realistic to accomplish. And I think it would go a long, long way toward building integrity, because she's right, the current structure is a bit theatrical. It has no bearing on anything. And I think that this is a real formula, as I said earlier, you know, it's like two plus two equals four. I mean, it's a solid, it's solid, it's real, and it's something that can easily be implemented statewide.
Thank you. Thank you both, and thank you, Leader Stuart Cousins. Senator Mayer?
Just briefly, one, it's great to see you, Julie, and I echo the leader's comments. You have been dogged and have created change, and that's really what advocacy is about. So thank you for that. One issue you did not raise, which I know is important to you, and I just wanted to get on the table, which is to change the practice by which the State Board authorizes the purchase of particular machines. That has been a sore point for you, and I think for many of us, that it's a passive process, rather than an active process, of choosing the best and then allowing county boards to choose from that list. So I believe there's a bill to change that, that many of us support, and I just wish you could speak very briefly, because I know we have other panelists, about the importance of having the State Board become an active player in picking the best machines, as opposed to just letting the vendors determine the machines they want to sell.
Yeah, there are actually two bills. There's the one to let the state, to authorize the State Board of Elections, this is S 6211 for the senators, to reject or rescind voting machines or systems because they're not proper, safe, or secure. So that would enable them to use criteria that you legislators haven't come up with. Right now, we're working on 2008 voting machine criteria. So they're just, when they review voting machines, they've got, there's no criteria at all about hybrids, let alone a ban on them. So they've got to evaluate it as though it's just a touchscreen, or as though it's just a standalone optical scanner, but there's no evaluation of how those two interpenetrate. So there needs to be a little bit of flexibility. And then...
There's a second bill you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, there's the, I'm sorry, I don't have it on my list in front of me, so my mind is skipping. Yes, there's also the risk, the, to enable them, to enable the Board of Elections to establish the criteria. So you have an RFP process for voting machines, instead of leaving it completely up to the vendors to decide which voting machines are going to be New York State. When our colleagues were lobbying in 2004, after the Help America Vote Act, they heard from vendors, no, you can't have paper ballots. New York State, it's been decided, is going to be a touchscreen state. Well, we did, apparently we did enough organizing, so we got to be a paper ballot state. But that's unconscionable, that a private corporation that wants to sell us profitable, very, very expensive hybrid voting machines gets to withhold standalone scanners that they've developed.
Thank you. Thank you very much on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Mayer. Thank you both for your time and for your testimony. We will next hear from John Gramata and Jeffrey Smith, if you can make your way to the stage. Okay, second call for Jeffrey Smith. All right, if not, is Bella Toth here? If you can make your way to the stage, thank you.
My name's John Gramata. I'm, as Senator Ricklin Melick told you earlier, I'm a member of the Rockland County Democratic Committee Executive Committee, although I'm not authorized to speak on their behalf. I'm also, for what it's worth, a judicial delegate in the 9th District here. And I'm here today to talk to you specifically about how we select elections commissioners in New York. We're engaged in, right now, in what has been termed a battle, if you've watched News 12 last week, which termed it as war brewing in Rockland County over selection of Democratic elections commissioner. And in the course of selecting commissioner, it's become apparent to us in Rockland County that the part of the statute that deals with selection of commissioners is incredibly deficient, and needs to be clarified, because the murkiness and undemocratic qualities of that statute really are rife for abuse and can be weaponized to benefit one particular special interest group or one particular community at the expense of other communities that are already disenfranchised, that we're trying to engage in the electoral process. In Rockland County, we, you know, we're trying to reform our party in our county and try to, the selection of a commissioner really is what is going to build confidence and allow these communities to reengage with the electoral process. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what's actually happening in Rockland County. Our long-term, longtime elections commissioner, her term was up at the end of last year. Our county committee met in a full convention of the committee, and we voted to recertify her and send a recommendation to our county legislature to reappoint her. And sadly, our Democratic Legislature did not, never reappointed our commissioner, which we were unaware of for several months. And it seemed to us, from what we've heard, both from her and from others, is that she was not reappointed because the legislators there wanted to extract certain favors from her, legislative favors from her brother, who was a legislator, and some special accommodations for particular members of our community. The way the election law is currently written, as you may know, it's Section 3-204. The county committees vote to send a recommendation to the legislature. The legislature then has 30 days, I believe, to act to appoint a commissioner, a reappointed commissioner. The way the law is written right now, the county legislators need to only wait out that time period to be able to do whatever they want. In this case, they didn't actually act to, on our recommendation, to reappoint a very qualified and distinguished election commissioner who has served us for many years. That, in my view and the view of many others in Rockland County, needs to be changed, that we need to somehow strengthen the ability of the county committee to be able to recommend a commissioner to the legislature and have it actually mean something, and not there be allowed this period when they can just wait it out and then appoint whomever they please. And the reason why that's important, I think, is because for building confidence, is the selection of a commissioner should happen in a transparent way, in front of a, in a democratic process, in which case this is the full committee, and then sent to the full legislature, so that the public can see how a commissioner is selected, instead of it having be selected behind closed doors by a bunch of guys who mostly represent one particular community, as it sadly exists in Rockland County. So I would urge you to take a good look at that law, and think how we can, how we can actually make the selection of commissioners more democratic, more transparent, and help build confidence in the electoral process in our counties. Now, Rockland County has a, you know, a particular odd situation politically, but I believe that the deficiencies in this law sort of apply to all the counties, and that the murkiness of that law needs to be cleaned up, and there should be some way for us to have, and some way for the electorate to know that professional, independent-minded people are actually being appointed to run the electoral process. Thank you.
Mr. Toth, please correct me on how to say your last name.
Good morning. I thank you for being inviting me, and let me tell you about me. I'm not a born politician, and I'm not a born speaker, okay? So therefore, what I'm saying, perhaps you guys are not going to like it, but yes, I am against this mail-in voting system, okay? And the reason, I going to the voting booth more than 50 years, I always find the time to go there and vote, okay? However, now it came in this COVID-19 virus, it triggered this mail-in voting, okay, which I'm against it, because that is opening the doors for big frauds, okay? If the people, they could go out and go shopping, buying lottery tickets, buying liquors, okay, they certainly could go out and vote, okay? It's unexcusable. As I, I certainly finding this is wrong if the mailing vote. I had seen mailing vote delivered to the polls or whatever on private cars. How is this possible? I mean, how they, they holding on to the votes and bring it into these polling, polling places to count the votes? That's not right. What I would like to see are picture ID in polling booths, okay, and you go there, you show your ID card, you prove you are a citizen, okay, and then you could vote. There is nothing wrong with that. And I think there was a lot of frauds going on. And that's all what I have to say. I would have to say a lot more about our government, politician, federal government, and also the state politicians, but I don't think this is belong over here, okay? And I have a big wish list.
We'll have over here.
So what I would like to see is really tighten up this voting situation, okay? Everybody should have a voting ID card, okay? And now, you wouldn't have any problem, did you get vaccinated or not, how are you going to prove it? If you have that little voting card or that personal little booklet, let's say, in, I'm sorry, I came from a communist country, okay? They, everybody had a personal book, your name, address was in there, where you worked, okay? And if any changes, it has to be entered in 30 days, okay? And you have to have this thing on with you, and all this booklet give you a perfect picture, who you are, what you are, okay? It's, I have nothing to worry about. I'm not afraid they're going to find something out about me which is wrong. It's, if you have nothing to hide, there's nothing wrong with this system, okay? But you always could prove it, who you are, what you are, especially how many times the police stops you and people, oh, I don't have any ID on me, okay? If you have no ID on you, you pay a penalty, okay? Simple as that. But you, unfortunately, we are, no, fortunately, we are a free country, but we are too free, okay? And I would like to a little bit tighten a loop, okay, because there's too many loopholes we have, okay? And that would, should be narrowed down, okay? I thank you very much. I'm sorry I told you I'm not a good speaker, but...
No, you were fine.
But I get to the point right away. I had a boss who told me, Bella, you never would make a good politician. So that's, that would be in a nutshell, okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think you were a good speaker. We may have some disagreements on the substance, but I thought you spoke very well. Senator Ricklin Melick?
Thank you, Senator Mayer, and just wanted to thank John Gramata for your testimony here today. What John has described is really emblematic of some of the challenges that this section of election law surrounding election of a commissioner, some of the problems that are there now. And what's going on in Rockland is, unfortunately, a Democratic majority in the county legislature that looks prepared to ignore the clear intent of the law when it that looks prepared to ignore the clear intent of the law when it comes to selecting Commissioners of the Board of Elections. So I'm actually working on legislation which I think will clarify some of these points. Unfortunately, it's not going to affect this current situation in the county, but certainly should help going forward. And so I appreciate the work that you are doing and others to call attention to what I think is definitely an antiquated section of law that does not clearly enough spell out what are the roles of the committee vis-à-vis the county legislature.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess it's clear what the intent of the law is, it's just, you know, we're left to just publicly shame our legislators into doing the right thing and it shouldn't be up to us to do that. So I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question for Mr. Gramata. We've heard throughout some of the hearings in the state and from what we've received and written testimony that we should remove the bipartisan requirement for the structure of the Board of Elections. And I'm wondering if you can speak to whether or not the issue that you're pointing out, the selection process, whether, what is being executed in real life versus what the spirit of the law is, either weighs for or against us keeping that bipartisan structure?
You know, it's tricky. I've heard you speak about this and I know that it's an issue. And, you know, as a dyed-in-the-wool Democrat with finally a supermajority in the Senate, you know, I'm happy to have Democrats controlling the process, of course, but I do believe that the Elections Commissioner should be, however it's possible for it to be a nonpartisan, a nonpartisan official, certainly someone who has more independence than they do now. I don't know how you achieve that through legislation and it seems like part of the problem with the current statute is that it's actually trying to figure out how to do that. It's very difficult to figure out how to get, how to get some kind of sense of justice in Elections Administration. I leave that to you to figure out. But I do, I, there's something definitely wrong when the electorate doesn't trust the way elections are administered, if even if people who are not Democrats are not, you know, not, have some, they think that the law's not being administered correctly because they're, the Democrats are in control. It shouldn't be that way. There should be some way to have a bipartisan, independent Commissioner controlling elections.
I would like to ask one question. Whenever you want to reach any politicians, there's too many buffer zones, okay? We have no phone numbers, no email address. And if you call in, there is a million other question, they ask you why you want to talk to that person, okay? And that's wrong. If I would have to tell that person who I'm talking to what I want to say, whoever I want to really talk to, it's useless. Then it's, I would need more simple, direct phone number or email address so I could write to that person, not to three, four people, it goes through and then the message get lost, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Toth.
All right.
We would be happy to provide our email addresses and phone numbers for you to reach our offices. Senator Mayer.
Just, yes, Mr. Toth, I don't know if you live in my district, you live in Westchester?
Pardon me?
Do you live in Westchester? Do you live in Westchester?
No, that would be all.
No, you live in Westchester?
Yes, yes.
Where do you live?
In Hartsdale.
In Hartsdale, okay.
Only 46 years.
Okay, we'll make sure to get you the email address of you. But I would say that for many years, you voted with your signature at the polling place that matched the signature in the poll book. You know, when you went in to vote, you signed your name and it was the same as your name on what they call a buff card. And I take it you thought that was an acceptable way to show that you were who you said you were, correct?
Okay.
Right? I'm only asking because you're suggesting about an ID card, but for many years in New York, we have done very well with just your signature matches the signature that you registered to vote on many years ago. And I take it that's what you have done? You have signed your name and it matched your signature? And no one questioned that it was you? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say that you are my constituent and so I have staff there, please raise your hand, staff, so that you will please get my phone number. And let me also say, and I do appreciate how hard it is sometimes to directly speak to your person, but everybody says, I gotta just talk to that person, to me, for example. And that's not possible. So why people ask people, why would you need what is, because I actually have a staff that depending upon what it is you need, will be able to either help you or direct you in the right way. So sometimes, just that question is not to, you know, waste your time, but it's to help you get the answers that you need when you need them. So that's kind of it. And the other thing I wanted to say is that we do, and I think Senator Mayer made the point, that we've done, we've been able to identify people with the signature and if the signatures match, then you can continue to vote. But the other thing is, when we passed early voting, for example, we were the 44th state in the whole nation to pass early voting. So there's a lot of things, the mailing voting has been happening all over the country long before we did it. So we were sort of behind, we were, we really thought it was important to catch up.
You know, also about this, this voting business, I really would, since we are United States, we have 50 states, I don't understand why every state has their own voting machine. There should be one type of a voting machine, okay? And that's the way it should be, one, one machine, one type of a machine, okay? And that would be much cheaper, because you have to, the mail-in vote, you have to print new materials, send it out, takes time, then this person fills it out, send it back, takes time and money, okay? And you keep busy the post office instead of going in to the place and vote. It's many years ago, or just the recent, last voting, it had been, become this mail-in vote thing, okay? I could understand if someone's sick or someone is out of the country, the mail-in vote is okay, but not for everybody, not for the general public, okay? As I said, if they could go out shopping, buying lottery tickets and everything else, they certainly could go out and vote, okay?
Well, that's, thank you. I was gonna say, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
And I want to just underscore what our leader and Senator Mayer have said. I think it's the concerns around fraud in elections. I think if there is genuine concern about that, that is something that every elected official should take seriously. But what I like to stress in these conversations is that that concern has to be underlined by facts and there has to be evidence of that fraud. And we had tens of thousands of people vote by way of absentee ballot and mail-in voting without any instances of fraud. There have been studies on states that have conducted elections strictly by mail-in voting, millions of votes cast, and there was a .0000007% instance of fraud. And so when we have these conversations, I think it's very important that they be based in what we've already seen, what we've studied, and that we don't, because it's a very serious allegation that there is election fraud happening. And the integrity of our elections, as you've heard from previous witnesses, is something that we care deeply about, we've passed legislation on it. So we care about how our elections are administered and that they're being done in a way that comports with the law. So I would just encourage us, as we have these conversations, to base them in fact. But we thank you very much for your time and your testimony. And Mr. Gramata, thank you for your time and your testimony as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we will hear from Joanne Rodriguez. I do see that Mr. Grossman has just walked in, so if you can make your way to the stage. And Noah Terschwell. So we'll start with Mr. Grossman and then hear from Mr. Terschwell.
Okay. Thanks so much, Chairman Meyer, for holding this. Majority Leader Stuart Cousins, pleasure to see you, Senator Harkins, Senator Mayer, Senator Reichlin Meldick. I'm here just sort of to briefly discuss the elections issues that I've seen in this particular area. And let me just start with early voting, because that was the one I saw most recently. Early voting was immensely popular here in Westchester and we saw in the last election, Westchester voters really, really turned out. And that, I think, is a testament to just how valuable the passage of early voting has been. One of the things we've seen is that early voting is in fact so popular, and in Rockland 2, Senator Reichlin Meldick, we saw immensely long lines. And it was difficult to get the Board of Elections to respond quickly enough and adequately enough to expand capacity, whether it's by expanding hours, by expanding the number of sites. I believe there's a little bit more flexibility in the law now to allow for things like sites that are open for fewer than nine days or mobile sites. I would strongly encourage much more to provide access to early voting, particularly in the southern half of the county here where there's so much population density. And frankly, where I think there's a lot of untapped voter enthusiasm, I think there's a lot of hunger for more opportunities to vote, more convenient opportunities to vote. I have, I have sat here in hearings and testified with sort of a shibboleth about, you know, work and family obligations and all that. I'm a new dad now, which is delightful. And I, thank you so much. And I understand those family obligations more than anything else. And as, you know, as important as voting is to me, you know, I know that obviously my family obligations come first. And so providing that flexibility to vote in person, particularly with the difficulties that we've seen with the postal service, the distrust that exists fairly or unfairly with mail-in voting, I think providing more opportunities for in-person voting is so valuable. But also to make sure that there is that lifeline to the Board of Elections to make sure that they're responding. You know, I remember when, when early voting was introduced, you know, we saw three-hour lines in Mamaroneck. I mean, what an absurd idea that we should see three-hour lines to vote here in New York State. I mean, great to see that voter enthusiasm and absurd that we can't accommodate it quickly. So, you know, I do think we need to see more professionalization, better response from the management at the Board of Elections to make sure that the voters are actually being served. You know, I, I don't mean to indict any particular Board of Elections, you know, here, but, you know, we do see this lack of professionalization. We do see a lack of responsiveness to the needs of the voters, who are the primary clients of the Board of Elections. We do see, for better and worse, responsiveness on the part of Boards of Elections around the state to frankly, county party establishments. Which is not to say that county party establishments are nefarious organizations that have it in for the voters, but there needs to be greater independence of these Boards of Elections from the county party establishments so that they are focused on ensuring that voters have the most opportunities to vote, to vote safely, to vote efficiently. So just to, but overall, I really want to compliment the legislature for everything that's been done, not just to adopt early voting, but to tweak it in a way that has consistently expanded access to it. I know we're pretty new to it, but I think we're getting good at it fast and I really want to see that, that steep learning curve continue. The other thing I want to discuss, which I, I wish had got, gets more attention, but certainly it's spent, I've spent a lot of my life on it, is local government elections. And, you know, we see a lot of problems in local government elections. They are, generally speaking, run by the jurisdictions themselves as opposed to by the Board of Elections. Whatever complaints I have about the Board of Elections, at least their full-time job is running elections. In school districts, it's the district clerk. In villages, frequently it's the village clerk. These are people whose full-time job is really something other than being an election administrator. We see village elections, school district elections occur on days that are completely separate from all other elections. Every time we're adding election days to the calendar, we're decreasing turnout, right? We already have enough of a problem in New York State with voter turnout on June primaries and November general elections. Turnout for school district elections in May or village elections in March is abysmal. We're talking below 10%, sometimes below 5%. And it is not just that it reduces the size of the voting population overall, but it does so in a, it has a disproportionate racial impact in the way it works. We see voters in local elections are disproportionately white. We see that the elected officials they produce are disproportionately white. And it is so critical, not just because these are the entities that provide the services that New Yorkers come in contact with most on a daily basis, whether it's their children's schools, local policing, parks and recreation, I mean, you name it. But also that this is the bench to hire office. You know, today's school board members will one day be state legislators, they may be members of Congress, they may be mayors. And so encouraging greater racial diversity there, I think, is really important. And so part of it is, how do we think about those election days and whether they should be consolidated together? Part of it is, do we have systems, at-large systems in all of these local elections that dilute votes? We had one case that we took a long time prosecuting in Senator Reichlin Meldick's district with the East Ramapo Central School District, Senator Mayer in your district, of course, the Village of Portchester. But these aren't the only examples, they are just the ones that have been prosecuted. And we see vote dilution on a fairly wide scale because we have 670-some-odd New York State school districts with racially polarized voting, may elections, and at-large systems which end up disproportionately favoring white voters to the detriment of voters of color. And so, you know, this is a problem that we see in other school districts in Westchester and Rockland and elsewhere in the state. It's prevalent on Long Island for sure. And, you know, one of the great difficulties, and I apologize for rambling so much, you know, is because, and I don't mean to indict every district clerk and suggest that they are doing a bad job, I'm sure many of them are doing the absolute best they can, but, you know, we see them offering fewer polling places, less language assistance than they would provide in general elections. All of the conditions are really ripe in local elections to disfavor naturalized citizen voters, voters of color, language minority voters. And that's something that we can really do, really be leaders in confronting, because this isn't just a problem here in New York, it is a problem nationally. There's a lot of political science research out there talking about the failure to adequately represent people of color, voters of color on local councils. And so if I, if I can briefly mention a legislative solution, which is already out there and which the Senate really has, has made a lot of progress on, it is the John R. Lewis Voting Rights Act of New York, S 1046. I believe everyone sitting at this table is actually a co-sponsor, so thank you. But the tools are in that toolkit to really move the ball forward and, you know, certainly to tackle a lot of the problems that we have here at home in New York, but also to make us a national leader. Because too often, we are seeing voter-suppressing states point to New York and saying, "What's the matter? We do it better than they do it." And that is unfortunate, partially because it's rarely true, but certainly it is true in some aspects and we can always be doing better to expand the franchise. And so, anyway, thank you so much for letting me testify here today. And, you know, the, the attention that the Senate pays to elections, I think, has really made such a sea change in how we approach things over the last three years. And I just hope we can continue that progress. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Terschwell.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm 17 years old, so I would like to talk about, what I can talk about, which is voting registration and preregistration, and share some thoughts and observations I've had. Because New York State lowered the voting registration age a few years ago, I was able to hold two successful voter registration drives this past fall. The first was at my high school. We registered about 25 students out of about 150 who were eligible, which was a, you know, decent rate, we could have done better. We could have done better, but we were happy with it. At my synagogue, I registered another 15. And so between the two drives, we preregistered about 40 future voters. And that's an accomplishment that, you know, I worked with a few other friends. We were very proud. But there were a few obstacles that we ran into. The first of which concerns online voter registration. In order to register to vote online, they require both your DMV-issued number on your license or permit and your... the last four digits of your social security number. And, you know, I think for adults, that's not much of a problem. Most adults have DMV-issued permits or license and know their social security numbers. Most kids, from what I've seen, do not. And so, you know, I think one out of the 25 people that we registered at my high school did it online. Everyone else did it on paper because it just really wasn't an option, especially if you want to do it... You know, sending people home with forms doesn't really work. You want to get them to do it at the table, right there in the present moment. And so it's very difficult to do it online. Like I said, we did have paper registration forms, so that was... The bulk of our effort was working with paper forms. But even that had its flaws. You know, these are 16, 17-year-olds we're talking about, me included. I had to fill out the form twice, some people three or four times before they got it right. We just, you know, we haven't filled out official forms before. It, you know, our school vaccine forms, our health forms, all that, our parents do. It's not really something that we have experience with. And so, you know, the form is a little intimidating to young folks. And in addition to that, when you fill it out by paper, either you have to mail it in or hand-deliver it to the BOE. So I ended up bringing almost every form to the BOE myself, but had we not been doing that, people would have had to individually mail in, which, again, might not seem like a problem, but young people don't... Either don't know how to mail, don't want to take the time to mail. And so that's just another problem with the paper form. And, you know, overall, I don't think these are, you know, really terrible obstacles that we ran into. And the fact that I, as a 16-year-old back in September, was able to preregister to vote is great in and of itself. But I do think that there are some small changes that could be made here to make voting registration far more accessible to young folks. Dropping... You know, the paper form requires either a DMV number or a social security number, not both. I think that would make a very big difference online. Young people also feel more comfortable doing things online. It's easier online. So I think all of that makes it the more likely option for young people and easier for them. And of course, this would also be consistent then with the paper form. So that's basically, you know, what I've seen, what I've observed. I think that voting... Registering to vote should be easy. We... You know, I'm no expert on this matter, but most countries don't have a voting registration process. We are... It's an extra obstacle to vote. In fact, on my AP government exam this year, that was one of the long-response questions. You had to identify what the obstacle to vote was, and it was registering to vote. So I do think the process should be as easy and straightforward as possible. And young people don't vote at good rates. They don't register to vote at good rates. The more accessible and easy it can be for young folks, I think, the better. So thank you for the opportunity to testify here today.
Thank you, and thank you both. Leader Stuart Cousins?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you. Noah did not say that he's a intern with me. And so he's continued his interest in electoral politics and policy. So I think we will work on some of your suggestions over the next couple of weeks with staff. But thank you so much for coming to be part of this testimony. Appreciate you. And thank you also, Mr. Grossman, for the attention on the early voting. And, you know, I couldn't agree with you more.
Thank you. Leader Stuart Cousins, we will next hear from Senator Harkam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, thank you both. Noah, it is great to get your perspective, you know, though we were, you know, we were thrilled to do the preregistration and then to hear from the consumer directly. That's important feedback for us. And thank you for your drives. Perry, I share your observation about early voting. I represent from kind of Alhalla North, so it's sort of suburban, and then it gets more rural as we go up, but I have the city of Peekskill. And to me, the lines of early voting were simply because, I mean, partly it was ours, but so few locations. The further north you got was that, you know, one location for the city of Peekskill, and then you would have one location for the whole northeast quadrant of Westchester County. It was just math, you know? And so I agree with you that we've got to find ways. Now granted, the local boards have their own budget, so this comes out of their budget. And so when we pass laws that have an impact on their budget, we have funded some things, and maybe we need to look at that a little more. But I agree with you, expanding capacity. So we shouldn't have to scramble to call them and say, "The lines are too long. You got to expand." You know, we should have enough capacity built into the system. So, you know, I thank you for raising that issue because it's an important point.
It's my pleasure. And just to respond, you know, there are a number of issues. And I, in the last cycle, ran into court in Rockland County, colleagues ran into court in Ulster County to get hours expanded. We're both successful. But, you know, it shouldn't take that much effort. And in terms of the numbers, I know the legislature recently lowered the threshold from, I think it's 50,000 to 40,000 in counties over half a million, 30,000 in counties under half a million. You know, it's possible that it needs to go even further. Now, obviously, that is a minimum standard. But the fact is, there is... The more sites we put out there, the more people will avail themselves of it. And that voting is a cost-benefit analysis at bottom, and there is no monetary benefit to it. It is a civic duty, a civic right. But the, you know, if you make people take an hour, two hours to go vote, you're going to lose folks. So the more convenient we make those early voting opportunities, the more we're going to get folks. And then obviously, you know, when we've got this kind of population standard, we are going to locate sites more in more densely populated areas. And places like northern Westchester County, Putnam County, are going to lose out because they're less densely populated in that zero-sum game. This isn't to suggest that we should have fewer sites in densely populated areas, but we need to do more to find the voters where they are. And so, you know, I think a little bit of that is limiting the discretion of Boards of Elections to make sure that there are areas of the county they can't ignore. And part of it is taking some of the funding onus off of the counties and having it shouldered by the state because, you know, there are, of course, counties, county legislatures, which are not robust proponents of the right to vote. And they're only too happy to underfund elections. You know, the state legislature can deprive them of the prerogative of underfunding elections and make sure that everyone has access to an early voting site. So I would certainly recommend considering that. But also, I just want to go on record as commending this guy. He says he's not an expert. I am, and I think he did a pretty good job.
Thank you. Senator Mayer.
Well, thank you to both of you. First, Mr. Grossman, I'm so glad you drew attention to school district and local elections. You know, you and I have talked about that. There is tremendous room for improvement in the school district election process to encourage participants, particularly after this year, where parents really were like, "Why wasn't I paying attention before? These people are making decisions that affect my child." And I think you and I saw, in particular, communities that have become more diverse over time in the suburbs, a single site for a school board election basically disenfranchises many people who don't have cars, who may live in the downtown. We saw that, I think, in Portchester, and you weighed in, and I appreciate that. But I do think there's room for constructive, separate legislative change with respect to both municipal and school board elections. And I think we're all very interested in your ideas on that. So thank you for raising that. I mean, there is tremendous opportunity to make these more effective representations of the communities where these people are. But Noah, I just want to say that I had a bill to require school districts to have two times a year voter registration drives that were not dependent on our friends and illegal women voters, but actually had either representatives of the school or the Board of Elections come. I could not move that vote, that bill. We ended up with a compromise, which requires some coordination and cooperation with the boards. In your case, did you organize the school? And was the school receptive to your organizing?
Yeah, they were. I reached out to our assistant head of the upper school. He helped me. We made homeroom announcements. We sent out emails. We had... It was during National High School Voter Registration Week, which is a relatively unknown week.
Yes, I was going to say. You're the only one who ever heard of that.
It does exist. At the end of... It's the last week of September. And so three days during lunch every day, we were set up, you know, right outside with a table with forms. We also had for... I go to Hackley High School, so we had for Connecticut, New Jersey, and New York. And, you know, I think there are people who are apathetic regardless of what you do and don't really care about the process. But I think that support from the school would really help. You know, I tried and did not succeed to get like a reward system, like the most kids in a homeroom or some sort of contest to try and to increase participation. But overall, I think it went better than I expected, so.
Good for you. Congratulations. But we knew legislative change, too.
Thank you, Senator Mayer. Senator Reichlin-Melnik.
Thank you, Senator Myrie, and thank you, Noah and Perry, for your comments here. Noah, I was curious, you know, you mentioned some of these obstacles from the voter registration and how it's difficult to get people technically to be able to participate in that. What else were you seeing? Because you mentioned, you know, you had about 25 people at the school signed up. The folks who didn't register, then, were they saying anything in particular about why not, or was it just a difficulty?
Yeah, a lot. We were very clear that it was nonpartisan. I think a lot of the people who preregistered, it ended up being leaning left. But I think the number-one issue people had is that they just didn't see the need. They said, "I can't vote. There's no point. When I'm 18, I'll register, and that'll be that." And I think a lot of the problem is the feeling among young people of not being heard in the democratic process, not being... Not participating in it. And if the system is going to, you know, ignore me, why should I bother taking this preliminary step to get involved? I think that was the primary reason that people just didn't want to take part in it.
Thanks.
Thank you. So I have a comment and a question. So my comment is to Mr. Terschwell, first, to congratulate you on your activism and advocacy. I certainly not wasn't, as a 17-year-old, speaking at public hearings on election reform. And while I wasn't smart enough to be an AP government, I might suggest that testifying at a Senate hearing is right up there with the final that you had to take. So thank you for your activism. And to Mr. Grossman, thank you, of course, for your constant work on this issue. You mentioned, very briefly, the notion of professionalization. And I was hoping that you could speak to what you think that might look like. We've heard from many people across the state, both pro and sort of con on, you know, changing the bipartisan nature of it, whether or not that would lead to more professionalism. And I'm hoping you can speak to us a little bit about what you think that might look like.
So I'm only going to weigh in insofar as the constitutional structure permits at the moment rather than suggests that we get away from the bipartisan system, although there are certainly strong arguments in favor of that. You know, right now, we have a system that is very much dominated by county legislatures and county parties nominating people who may or may not be qualified to run elections. And in fact, there are a number of people, current commissioners, who have absolutely no business whatsoever running elections. It is important that there be minimum standards for qualification. You know, it should be mandated that there are regular professional development requirements, both for commissioners and for staff. You know, one other thing that I will say sort of concerns me is that, you know, when we see good elections commissioners, and certainly there are many good elections commissioners in the state of New York, you know, they're the ones who take a lot of responsibility for ensuring that the voters are well-served. Sometimes this puts them at odds with their party. And it is important that, once a commissioner is elected, that there be a certain amount of insulation from that party process. I was deeply disturbed to find out that there were commissioners who had their jobs held over them by their county legislatures, by their county parties, you know, for doing what they could to accommodate voters. So there should be longer terms available with only good cause removal. But, you know, as long as we're working within the system we're working in, you know, it can't just be that politically popular people within a party become elections commissioners. Running an election is an extremely difficult job, as we saw in the last year. There are places around the country that did a really excellent job of running elections. We had a lot to deal with here. I don't want to just slight our elections officials nonstop because they did, you know, strong work under very challenging circumstances. It could have been a lot better. And, you know, we can look at each election individually and say, "Well, you know, that was a mistake. People make mistakes." The problem is, we see them every single election. And that is due in large part to the fact that we do not have adequate standards for who we appoint to be election commissioners, adequate independence of those folks from their county legislatures. And, you know, again, also making sure that they have the funding they need, which cannot be held over them by the county legislatures, to make sure that they're able to make decisions in the best interest of the voters. So, you know, certainly, we can talk about whether degree requirements are valuable, but I think even more so is making sure that an accredited body that is expert in providing professional development for commissioners, that people who are elections commissioners are required to get regular certification, that they are required to take certain classes, and that we have accountability measures to make sure that, you know, voters' votes are not being needlessly thrown out, to making sure that, you know, we are adequately serving enough people at each polling place. So it is about determining what the accountability measure should be, determining exactly what those qualification standards should be, and then making sure that, once we have appointed qualified professionals, that they are not able to be booted out if they fall out of favor with their county party.
Thank you very much, and thank you to you both for your time and your testimony. So we are going to mix it up a bit, and we may end up doing our last panel with three people. But first, let me call Patrick Mailer. Okay, great. Who will be joined by Jenny Gier. And again, please correct me if I am mispronouncing your last name.
Fabulous. So I'd first like to thank Senator Myrie for coming up to Westchester and hosting this. I'd also like to thank all of you, especially Senator Mayer, who's my senator. My name's Patrick Mailer. I'm a junior in the New York State School of Industrial and Labor Relations at Cornell University. I am the president and one of the co-founders of Cornell Votes, where a nonpartisan org who tries to help every Cornellan get out to vote. That sometimes means Ithaca, but most of the time, that means New York State and the entire country. And I hope you all get the chance to read my written testimony, and I'll save you the play-by-play. But it took my... But it took my friend and I, Leo, who I've known since I was five years old, he goes to Providence College. In the June 2020 primaries, it took us four hours to vote. I had voted by mail, because at the time I was at school, I just wanted to be done with it, so I voted by mail. But Leo, as lots of studies have shown us, say, "Your first voting experience is paramount to how much you vote afterwards." So, he wanted to vote in person. Sounds great. I live in Yonkers. He lives in Mount Vernon. Our plan was to go to Mount Vernon, vote at Lincoln Middle School, then go to New Row, get lunch, be done for the day. Four hours later, we had lunch. And the thing that is most frustrating to me is a host of issues, starting with voter registration. I'll again save you the play-by-play, but we had the voter registration card that was mailed to him. We get to Mount Vernon, and they say, "No, this is wrong. You need to go to the Westchester BOE." Fine. So, we drive out to White Plains. We show up, and we waited an hour line. "Hey, we'd like to vote." "Oh, you got to wait for the commissioner." Now, I've read the entire 800-page election law. I ask how many under-20-year-olds have also done that multiple times. But he has the right to vote affidavit. So, we say, you know, Leo's a much more patient man than I am, and, you know, just sit down, we'll wait. We waited for two hours, commissioner never came. I know that Lafayette is still the commissioner for the Westchester County Board of Elections, but never had the chance. Eventually, he was given a manila envelope, he was writing a letter to a judge, all this stuff, every 15 minutes, which is all a show, and said, "Great, now you can go back to Mount Vernon and vote." Well, we just watched a guy from Ryan and another guy from Yonkers vote in the machine. Can't we just vote in the machine? "No, you got to go back to Mount Vernon." So, we drive back to Mount Vernon, he votes, and we eventually have lunch at 5:00 PM in New Rochelle. And I share this story with you, because there's three main takeaways I got. I had just started the Student Org of Cornell Votes. We were going to launch July 4th, so I was very much new and learning everything. The first thing I learned is, and I'm not going to call myself a voting expert, but it doesn't matter how well you know the election law, if you're on election day and nobody is there to listen to you. Didn't matter how many times I said, "Look, in this section in page 500 and something, he has the right to vote affidavit." Doesn't matter. The second thing I learned was that bad experiences beget low civic engagement. Now, Leo votes every election. That might be because he knows I'd yell at him if he didn't, or maybe he's a good citizen. I like to think it's the latter. But there are so many examples of long voting lines, all sorts of issues, and then people don't go back to vote. Part of all, we were sitting in the Westchester BOE, we watched this woman who was there for a two-hour overlap of while we were there, I won't use any of her explicitives, but stood up, very frustrated, said, "I'm done with this. I've been sitting here for three hours. I have to go pick up my son." And the thing that concerns me is, is she ever going to vote again? I would be surprised if Leo would vote again, especially after the experience we had. And just a couple weeks ago, I went and voted, early voting on the first day in New Rochelle. We like that restaurant. And so, me, Leo, and a friend, Josh, the three of us went, kid from Yonkers, kid from Bronxville, and a kid from Mount Vernon. We submitted our ballots at 1:00 PM, and three people had voted, Josh, Leo, and I. And my concern is that these bad experiences do translate into lower turnout and lower civic engagement. And the final lesson I learned from that was that the incentive to not vote is enormous. Every single excuse I hear as a voting organizer almost came true for Leo. "It takes too long. They're going to get rid of my vote anyway. A smidgen or something's going to disqualify me. Registration is confusing. My vote's not going to matter." And all three of those things are incredibly worrying to me, not just because of their obvious violations of civil rights, but because I, as somebody who, you know, had just been 19, I don't think they took it seriously for a lot of what we were trying to do. I'm not sure if they thought they were trying to calm my bluff, but I knew what I was talking about. I'm no voting expert, but I know what I'm talking about. But there's millions of New Yorkers who don't. And just because you don't know what you're talking about, doesn't mean you don't have the right to vote. And so, the thing that concerns me, I have voted by mail almost every election. The first one I did, I was still home. Took me 30 minutes to vote. I walked five minutes to the public school right by me, 15 minutes, five minutes back home. My voting experience is great. I'll go back and vote again. For some people, it's four hours. And besides this horror story, there are very, very legitimate ways that we can fix this and that we can change this. And I'm very pleased, especially with you, Senator Myrie, for passing a lot of these bills through the senate elections. I especially think the S2076, which included all the Sunnis in our new AVR bill. Fantastic. That's going to help 600,000 New Yorkers just vote. It also leaves out all of our private schools, another 600,000 New Yorkers who now can't use AVR. I intentionally mentioned at the start that I'm at the New York State School of Industrial Labor Relations at Cornell, because I'm technically a part of the SUNNIS system. Now, I understand there might be logistical reasons or whatever that the SUNNIS system was included in the bill and the private schools aren't, but I really don't think that the kids at Syracuse and Cornell and Pace are any less worthy of AVR than those at Binghamton and Stony Brook. Another bill in the committee I really hope you all consider a little more is S2161 about polling sites on college campuses. Now, I know this is not the testimony for the southern tier, but especially in Ithaca, my dorm to the polling site would be a 25-minute walk. And you're not allowed to have a car if you're a freshman or sophomore on campus. So, I vote by absentee, one, because I love my home of Yonkers, and I've always voted in Yonkers. But for all those who want to vote in Ithaca, it's impossible. You can't get there. You have class, you have things you have to do. Now, tons of people have already spoken about all sorts of other reforms that need to happen. I'm more than happy to speak to any of those and any questions. But the, just three things I'd like to really leave you with are, one, the elections can be better managed in Westchester. I've personally organized in the Bronx, and Tompkins, Tioga, Cortland, and Westchester, and rural suburban rural and urban places, all throughout our state. I personally manage our student governmental elections, which have a population bigger than some of the counties in the state. I assure you that there are better ways to manage the elections as we're doing them here. The second thing is, please really consider some of those legislations. An amendment to the AVR bill that includes private institutions will literally help over half a million New Yorkers registering to vote. I get very frustrated with voter registration, just because my org is called Cornell Votes, not Cornell registers you to vote and then reminds you three months later that you need to vote. And legislation can really make our lives a lot easier. And just that final thing, and I have the written testimony, if you'd like it in paper as well, please take the two minutes to read through Leo and I's story, because it is absolutely absurd how long it took for us to vote. And I worry that we are discouraging millions and millions of young New Yorkers from coming out to vote again. Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Jenny?
Hi. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Jenny Gier. For the past three years, sorry, 30 years, I've lived in the town of Mamaroneck, and I am a lifelong resident of New York State. I am also a leader of Larchmont-Mamaroneck Indivisible, one of many grassroots indivisible groups in Westchester. And as part of being a leader, I have to communicate with people about elections. And so, I have, I was never, I'm not a lawyer, I was never an expert on elections, I was always a voter, but I've learned a lot. So, I want to thank you first for making voting easier. I was personally very excited when that first slate of election reforms passed in 2019. And so, while we may have been in the dark ages before that point, we're at least making progress now while some other states are going backwards. So, thank you so much for that. Second, we do still have a ways to go, and I was very glad to hear Perry Grossman talk about the John Lewis Voting Rights Act of New York, which I only recently learned about. So, I know that you are all supporting that, and I hope to help get that passed this coming year, if possible, because we need it. Mostly, what I wanted to say today was about the structure of the Boards of Elections, and that has already been talked about quite a bit. So, maybe I'll summarize and just add a couple of specifics that haven't been mentioned. Certainly, the partisan nature of the leadership seems to bring a conflict of interest kind of inherent in that structure. I do want to mention that Common Cause New York did a white paper earlier this year about election administration, where they looked at a lot of other states that have nonpartisan boards, and that may be helpful. A lot, it's over my head, most of it. Some of the issues around the partisan nature of the leadership, I was actually shocked to learn in 2018 that a county legislator who had just been defeated at the ballot box, had just been appointed to a very handsomely paid position at the County Board of Elections, which just seemed plain wrong to me. So, you know, it seems to be ripe for that kind of abuse. And I think the Board of Elections should be above that kind of political management. It also doesn't necessarily lead to good decision-making, and as a voter, I have made some observations. For example, as has already been referenced, Mamaroneck, which is where I live, was, had one of the worst experiences in the state for primary day in 2020, and there were people online that day until 1:30 in the morning, which was horrible. And as somebody who was trying to communicate about the availability, the first time ever availability of early voting, it was incredibly frustrating that the Board of Elections did almost nothing to publicize the availability of early voting. So, there were no lines for early voting, and then the day of primary day, it was horrible. And yes, there was COVID, but, you know, they should have anticipated that. Voter communication is definitely lacking with our Board of Elections. For example, recently, I, for the primary, I received a card in the mail that was so nondescript, I could easily have missed it, but I happened to notice it, and I read it and saw that my polling place had been changed. It was very last minute. There was no explanation for why, and there was nothing to draw my eye to the fact that there was a change. I had voted in the same place for years. So, it's, I don't understand why it's not possible for the Board of Elections to print a notification card with two colors, you know, even just a red highlight. So, those decisions, who's making those decisions? It's not clear if they're really thinking ahead, and in 2021, it should be an easy matter. It would be nice to be able to take a look at sample ballots before the election, so that we can, you know, get used to how it looks, so that that will save time when we get to the polling place, but we are never able to get sample ballots in advance. So, the best that we can ask for, or that we can hope for, is for something like the League of Women Voters to provide a voting guide, but there's nothing that comes from the Board of Elections. And then, there's the Board of Elections website. So, I checked again, I checked yesterday, and I checked again today. If you go to the homepage of the Board of Elections website, there is nothing about the November election at all. All it has is detailed information about how to vote in the primary, which is well in the past, and in three months, we're going to election, elect the entire Westchester county government, and it doesn't even have the date. So, that seems kind of basic. I would like to reinforce some worries, and this also speaks to the Board of Elections, the hybrid voting machines, which I don't really understand very well, but I have gotten the message loud and clear from paying attention to these election integrity groups, that they are worrisome. And so, the process of making those decisions seems potential, to have potential for corruption. And so, I would, I support the ban on the hybrid voting machines. And last, and I did submit my online testimony this morning, but I did want to add some concern about the school elections, since that was brought up. And I did understand that there's something in the John Lewis bill for New York that would help to standardize school elections. There's a lot of politicization going on right now around school boards, especially in northern Westchester, which is very worrisome. And it is of concern, because there's supposed to be so-called nonpolitical elections, but there is no standardization. In Mamaroneck, where there was, you know, some undercurrents of, I would say, less-than-savory allegations that did not come out in the surface, above the surface, about certain candidates, but there was no way to get information about the candidates. Or I had trouble even figuring out how these elections were run. You know, it's completely opaque, and it doesn't seem to be standardized at all. I couldn't even find the final results of the election, but they finally did appear on the school district website. But if, I mean, I'm a voter, I didn't know where to look for the information about school elections, how they're run, and so on. So, since in our district, we no longer have a selection committee as of this year, we had eight candidates for school board. It really seems like an opportunity for somebody who is not well-meaning to come in from outside and to take advantage of the lack of information, not to mention low turnout, which, you know, as with the primary, was a terrible issue with the school election as well. So, thank you again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have questions. First place, Patrick, thank you. You really did a fantastic job. I'm proud to say you're volunteering in my office. You left that up, but this is in your Cornell Votes capacity. And thank you for identifying a real person who had a real challenge, and your work to expand the number of voters, particularly through colleges. Thank you for that. And Jenny, thank you for drawing attention to what happened in Mamaroneck, and the fact that a change of location in your polling site needs to be thoroughly informing to voters. You're lucky you looked at your postcard, I would suspect. Now, in your case, was this the first time the polling site was changed, that you know?
Since I've lived at my current address, which is 14 years, yes.
So, you, for 14 years, you voted at one place now?
Only one place, yes.
And now, in the postcard, it said a separate site. And do you know why your site was moved?
It was never explained, so I don't know.
I think that is one of the issues that we will address, is this change in polling sites. We did do a bill this year, my bill, to require a posting on the door of your old place when you went to vote, because many, particularly older voters, go where they have voted for years, thinking that it is the place. But that's not enough. We need to affirmatively do that. And I also thought the sample ballot issue is extremely important. I think people are entitled to know what the ballot looks like. It's not easy to navigate the ballot, and we should make it easier. So, thank you for bringing those issues. Thank you for your super advocacy on behalf of voting. Thank you.
Thank you both for your time and your testimony.
Thank you.
And our last panel for the day will be Erica Pierce and Sheila Stern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it okay to take this off?
Yeah.
Thank you, all of you, for sitting here today, and thank you, all of you, for the things that you have been doing to improve our elections. As has been said before, I applaud all of the changes we've had. I think we've had two great catchphrases here. One was catching up, which, thank God, New York is doing, and the other was doing the hard things. So, thank you in particular, Majority Leader, thank you all of you for taking these things on, because I know they're not easy. My name is Erica Pierce. I am a longtime district leader, and I'm also someone who served as a legislative aide in county government for three years. So, my comments are going to fall in two buckets. One is, will reflect on my experience in that chair, receiving constituent complaints, questions, issues. And the other will be about voter confidence, which I think is a critical thing, because it's a dangerous thing. So, I know a lot of these things have been said before, so I'll just try to touch on them again. Better communication is critical. Voters are confused. And while it's great that we have all these new wonderful options, if people don't understand how to access them, sometimes it may have the opposite result. And I'm not quite certain what the proper solution is. I know those little voter cards that come in the mail are not ideal. They don't contain enough information. I understand with COVID, things were very, very difficult also for the BOE, so I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. We had polling locations which had to be changed because of state rules. We had first responder locations and school locations which suddenly couldn't be used. But there has to be a better way between the websites and the mailings and whatnot to be able to communicate with our voters. The forms are confusing. Even the ballot is confusing. We get complaints about those all the time. Sample ballot would be helpful, perhaps a ballot redesign, especially when you get to things on the second side, is really, really important. to things on the second side, is really, really important, because people just get confused. On a practical level, we need better parking at some of these polling locations, especially for handicapped and senior voters. We do offer this speedier process for those folks, but when the lines are long, and with COVID, where the doors are locked and limited people were going inside, they didn't know. They just didn't know. They stood out there forever unnecessarily. So we have to do, find better ways of managing the day-to-day access. And, and along with that is the fact that the BOE is not very reachable during the elections. And so where do the complaints come in? Either it's because they couldn't find me, they refused to give me a ballot, I couldn't park, whatever it is, they come in to legislative aides, in the hopes that we can have a better number to somehow connect with the BOE to deal with the problem at the, at that moment. And we don't always even have a better number. The number will ring, it just won't be answered, whatever it is. So we have to really improve that communication. And along with that comes better training for the polling staff. Now, I know this is not an easy job. It doesn't pay well, and we owe a debt of thanks to all the people willing to do this job. They get there at 5:30 in the morning. In some cases, they're there till 1:00 in the morning. But there has to be a better way to manage their training. And if we need to look at splitting their shifts, so you don't have the same people, oftentimes senior citizens, sitting there for that many hours, that might be a way to go, because maybe then we can get improved people in these chairs and maybe, you know, people will be more alert as the day goes on, because that's when the crunch time hits. So, so those are, oh, and last, tracking absentee ballots. God bless our mail-in option that we have now in New York State. The absentee ballot process was so helpful during COVID, it was used massively. Other states have a way to track the mail. Did I, did I, my request get received? Has my ballot been sent out to me? Because a lot of folks didn't receive them. Has my ballot gone back? Did they receive it? That would be so helpful. So these are all important, practical things. I echo the statements earlier about the voting machines and a more active process on the state level, and, and not only because it's practically needed, but we are all about increasing voter participation. And to increase voter participation, we need to have elections which function in a way that is practical, that is accessible, and that also delivers confidence. Because when people don't have confidence in their voting process, either correctly or incorrectly, it's a dangerous situation. A lack of confidence is extremely manipulatable. And where, where does that end up going? When we have a lack of confidence, we end up with rules that limit access to voting, the very opposite of what we want to have here. So I want to also re-echo Fred Silverman's wise comments before about risk-limited audits. It is a simple, scientific way to kind of do a cross-check on what is, in many other ways, a black, opaque box and process. It's being done in other places. I think the idea of a pilot program is fantastic, but we do need to find ways, both politically and practically through our procedures, to restore and support confidence going forward. I understand and believe that our elections have been extremely successful the last few years. Us saying that there are issues doesn't mean that what we have done is not good. It just means that we can do better. And I think we have a responsibility to make certain that the data is there, everything is done, so that we can guarantee that our processes are correct and accurate, and we can argue firmly that everyone should have confidence, so we are not at risk for watching our accessibility to our voting go down. So thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Stern.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm quite nervous, so please bear with me, and I have to get all my thoughts together. First of all, I would like to say that I feel we should have a card with identification. One of the reasons I feel so is because there are people who have been deceased, who had been in the books, and of course, you know, no one should know that unless the family, which I did for my husband, when it came the time for me to be able to do that, is to report that the person had been deceased. Okay, at this time, you're, we're not using books. I am an inspector in Yonkers. At PS 13, which I agree with what she said, is parking is very, very difficult also. We have trouble between the people who come to vote, along with workers, who have difficulty parking. Some people are handicapped, and it's quite difficult. They don't want you to park in the schoolyard, because teachers are there, plus the fact that the gates are locked. We come there ahead of time and we can't get in. And parking on the street is very difficult, because they have it, so that you can't do that. But I'm trying to think of everything I want to say right now. The change that they made in this last election, in respect of how you vote, shouldn't have been done during a presidential election, because it was too much confusion, I felt at that time, for people learning and knowing. And as far as the signature part goes, when you sign, even in, I don't know if you were to sign in the book, sometimes people's signatures may change over a course of time. Plus the fact, in signing on the new pad, it's, I know myself, it's quite difficult. Your hand is shaky, and it doesn't always relate in that respect. Plus the fact, I know somebody who told me that when they went to vote, they weren't asked their name. They didn't show their name. They just, the person said to them, you live at such and such address, and that was at address, so they had to. Plus, there are people who have the same name, that can be in the same household. Sometimes accidentally, previously would have signed on the wrong place, too. So I feel that, as was stated previously, that people should show that. There's no harm to it if you have nothing to hide. And as far as mail-in goes, this time was good, because of COVID, I felt it was difficult for people to be able to come and vote. But normally, it should be basically for those who are really handicapped or disabled, which they come in too there. You know, there's so many different things. I'm just trying to think right now of different things. There was something else I can't even think right now. But basically, I just feel that people should be able to show ID when they vote, and it's just, the system, as I said, had changed, and they change when they vote, you know, primary or whatever. And sometimes people didn't know that date, so they didn't come in to vote, because it hadn't been publicized quite as much as I feel it should have been. Plus, I don't feel they should have several early voting sites, places, because to, some people can vote within a different district, or whatever you want to call it, saying that it's so-and-so. That could be a deceased person. Then they can come to their polling place and vote as themselves. So it can be thinking about it, different things that people can do, where it may not be how it should be in that respect. And, you know, there's just so many things. I can't think right now. I'm not reading from something. I'm just trying to, I have several thoughts that I had from seeing. I had been an inspector for many, many years, plus had been quite involved in community issues. I've gone for things on schools and busing and several things. So I'm quite concerned over things within a community. And, you know, I just wanted to say those things. I'm sure there's more I wanted to say, but I can't think of it right. And I'm just trying to gather so many thoughts together. I'm sorry if I hadn't spoken how I should have, but I'm just quite.
I know, I know you said you were nervous, but I think I can speak for my colleagues here, and I think you presented very well.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your, your time and your testimony, as, as, as do Ms. Pierce's as well.
And thank you all. I appreciate this opportunity.
Senator Mayer.
So all my constituents here, so I do have questions. So one, Sheila, thank you so much for speaking and, and giving your perspective. Have you gotten updated training from the Board of Elections before each of the elections? And when they switched to the electronic poll book, in I think the, one of the elections, you know, during COVID, did you get training on the electronic poll book?
Yes, I did.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that happened. And then Erica, you mentioned the calls that came to you as a staff person for County legislator Lee Koval, with people sort of not knowing how to reach the board. Did you, do you have like a hotline number or something?
There, there is. And the thing is, it would get, they would get overloaded so quickly with calls that it wouldn't be answered.
Oh.
Right? And, and it's not like you even left a voicemail that went into the great void. Not that that would have made anyone feel particularly great, because you don't know when it will be retrieved. It just literally would ring. I think the, the amount of calls coming in exceeds the support staff they have there to answer them. And they, of course, I think are also dispersing some of their staff out to the field, understandably. So I think they, they will need to kind of revisit how they handle those types of, on the day of, complaints.
Thank you.
Senator Harkam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both for your, your testimony. Erica, quick, quick question for you. You know, you spoke about the issues, the calls you get, and, you know, it goes to that issue of professionalism that we've heard from other testifiers, the nightmare story of, of Patrick. You know, we, we know the, a lot of the workers, as you say, are, they're part-time, they come for this, they try hard, they work hard. You know, the Board of Elections folks are, are public servants, they work hard. But again, it goes to this issue of professionalism and, and customer service is what the business we're in. What, what would you say of, of all the calls you get are like the top two or three issues on Election Day?
A lack of communication. So people are confused. A difficulties with poll workers in their mind. Of course, you're not there, so you know there can be different ways of seeing and experience, but they felt that poll workers may not have understood some of the rules. Certainly, not being able to be found in the book, what happens then, being turned away, people who had requested absentee ballots, who were told they were not allowed to vote in person, even though they, just because they had requested a ballot, even though it hadn't been returned. And in some of these were, as the day got on, would get better, because of course, those experiences would be had by the poll workers, and things would kind of get caught up. Equipment failure, which would then cause major backlogs. That's the hard part with relying on technology. It works great when it works, and when it doesn't work, you can really have a long-term lag. And then the parking, whether it's people needing public transportation, some of the early voting locations, because of COVID, were chosen really because they needed social distancing more than anything else. And I think people were able to understand that, but of course, that also meant that some of them were not in ideal locations for those who didn't have a car, or in locations in general, where people who need close parking were able to get to the, to be able to park.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your time and your testimony. So that concludes the witness portion of this hearing.
I'd like to have a follow-up question.
So, yeah, so, so that, we actually don't really do that, but we, we will be here for you to ask us questions after the hearing is complete. And we also would encourage anyone, not just Mr. Toth, who was not able to make this hearing in person, to please submit a written testimony. You can go to the Senate website to find that out. But we will be here afterwards to, to, to discuss any questions you may have. I would like for us to move into closing the hearing and would offer my colleagues the opportunity to give any closing remarks. We will start, of course, with our Majority Leader, Andrea Stewart-Cousins.
Thank you so much, Senator Myrie. And I really want to thank all of those who came to testify, everyone who has submitted testimony. Obviously, as you can tell, and I think Westchester's representation, a great cross-section of community, and we were able to hear different aspects of every part of what we, as responsible legislators, know we have to pay attention to. So I just want to thank you all for, for being part of this. And again, I think the overarching message here is communication. It's about making sure that it is, that there is awareness of what we're doing. And for us, we're doing it really fast. I mean, there's been a lot of changes between 2019 and now. And again, there will continue to be changes in our effort to not only enfranchise eligible voters, but really lead the nation, whether it's through the New York John Lewis Act or, or whatever else we do. So you are intricate to that, and our commitment to continue to find ways to communicate with the electorate, communicate with the voters, no matter where you enter, if you're 16, and how you enter. And, you know, this, this conversation today has been very helpful, and I guess underscoring the need to do that and our commitment to do that. So I want to thank you, Senator Myrie, for traveling to our district and for, you know, really letting the Hudson Valley and, and all of our constituents know the kind of serious deliberation that goes on with the Elections Committee. And again, thank you, and thank all of you.
Thank you very much. Leader Stewart-Cousins, Senator May, Mayor, I'm sorry.
There's a Senator May, too. So it's, it's easy to get confused. Well, thank you, Senator Myrie, and thank you to our leader, and thank you to everyone who came and spoke and submitted testimony. I thought we saw a really good cross-section of the issues that we are facing, and our opportunity to make positive change. So I thank people for raising issues from how long a delay took, to whether a voting site is changed, to school boards, to municipal elections. We really, professionalization of staff, resources, the law regarding selection of commissioners. We really hit on a lot of the key things that we will need to review and come up with some recommendations. I also wanted to thank the advocacy of people on all sides of these issues. This is, was, used to be sort of a narrow issue, voting rights. It's not a narrow issue anymore. It affects all of us, and I'm so thankful for so many of the advocates, whatever their positions, who really realize that if you don't stand up and speak at these hearings, your voice does not always get heard. So thank you for raising your voices, particularly to ensure that we have fair and accurate elections, that everyone who is entitled gets to vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Mayor. Senator Harkam.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Once again, I want to just echo the, the comments of the Majority Leader in thanking you for not only your service and your leadership, but coming to the Hudson Valley today to hear, you know, some of the, the geographic issues, some of the, the things that impact our rural areas, such as parking and distances. And we heard a lot of great things. I want to, I want to thank everybody who came to testify today. And I, I think, you know, there, there are a couple of things. Some of it has to do with fairness, openness, accessibility, but we also have to make sure that government works and government functions. And when we hear about government not working for people and people spending five, six, seven hours, A, in a line to vote, or B, because of ineptitude on the bureaucratic level, we, we need to fix that, whether it's at the county level or the state level. We also take that very seriously, because that should not be the customer experience of people trying to vote, you know? And just lastly, you know, we're, we're not going backwards, you know? And, and thank goodness for, for the Majority Leader, because she's made it quite clear, you know, we, not only are we playing catch-up, you know, we're going to be the leader of the pack. We are moving New York State forward. We're not moving backwards. And I'm proud to be part of a conference that takes that mentality when it comes to voting rights. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Standing ovation, Senator Harkam.
And my mother.
Senator Reichlin Melnick.
Thank you so much, Senator Myrie. Thank you for organizing this hearing and for coming to Westchester and hearing testimony from folks from both sides of the river here in the Hudson Valley. You know, voting is really at the core of what makes this the United States. And yet, for, you know, much of our history, voting has been severely limited. When we first declared our independence, only white men who owned a certain amount of property could vote. And until 101 years ago, women could not vote at all. There have been enormous challenges over the years to the voting rights of Native Americans, of people of color. And so we are continuing to try to make progress, to make voting, give it the, the treatment that it deserves as this foundational right. And so I appreciate tremendously the work that our Senate Majority Leader And so, I appreciate tremendously the work that our Senate Majority Leader has done, and our entire Senate Conference, over the last few years, trying to make voting easier and more accessible for people. While, of course, to address the concerns of some of the speakers, we want to make sure, obviously, people that should not be voting cannot vote, if they're not registered to vote, of course, if they're ineligible to vote. Nobody wants people to be voting multiple times or anything like that. But we need to make it easier for people who are eligible and registered to vote to cast that vote. And to hear stories of four-hour waits to cast votes right here in Westchester County, I think is a real reminder that there is a lot more work to do. And so, I appreciate everybody who came today to share some of these ideas and some of these thoughts for what we can do to make the process fairer and easier and more transparent for everybody to take advantage of. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and I'm so grateful to my colleagues for granting me a passport into the district today. Hopefully, I'll be able to come back. But really, major thanks to our Majority Leader, who has been committed to this issue. You know, I think it's important for us to say that there's a lot happening in the news today, and I think it's important that people see that in this Senate majority, we continue to do the work. That is what our focus has been on. And while there are a lot of things going on in the world, we still have a job to do. And Leader Stewart-Cousins has made that a priority for us. This sort of concludes our worst-to-first voting tour in the state. But we will be having a hearing in September, where Boards of Elections will come before this committee and our colleagues, where we will have what will undoubtedly be a spirited conversation about what we have heard from voters throughout the state. And so, I would encourage everyone to continue to submit written testimony. I want to thank the leader and all of my colleagues with us here today. And I also want to thank our staff, who, without them, this would not be possible. So, give them a round of applause. And a big shout-out to Senate Media Services, to Tom Cahill and Matt Carter, who have broadcast these hearings throughout. So, again, thank you, everyone. Please get vaccinated, stay safe.